All right. I'm gonna call the June twenty fourth council meeting to order at seven P M in our library program room. Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just turn it over briefly to Brian to give a little introduction for why we're here tonight. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we jump to our agenda, I just wanna uh let everyone know that this we are now in our new library uh program room where we have new audio and visual uh that we retained. Thank you to Megan Masa, our uh grant pro- uh grants uh program manager. Uh, she obtained this money from the state of Connecticut, so all the uh technological advancements are uh thanks to her efforts and as well as Mary Ann Tellatier, our librarian. Her and her staff for putting together. But you wanna say that this the setup is intended for presentations to the library when they do their presentations. Have it like an author commitment talk. You can watch it now virtually. So with the difference in format, we it we have to, we should be careful not to talk over each other as the as the sound system, the microphones work might work a little differently than the owl, but uh we'll see how it goes to this this point. All tests have been fantastic, so uh I thank again uh my wonderful staff, uh Megan and Mary Ann and everyone else involved for uh putting this together. That's it. Thank you, Brian.
Yep, big thank you again from council to all the hard work. So I'll secure the bonds then outfit the room.
All right, moving along, um we have no proclamations and presentations tonight, so we'll go to public petitions, communications, and public participation, uh which has a two-minute time limit on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. Go to the room first.
Yes.
Yes, um.
Yeah, how was that?
Maybe.
Right up to the table.
Go up, yeah, go up to.
Right next to you.
You're the top.
Right next to you. Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And did you want me to say my name? What'd you want me to say?
Uh, name and address, and then you can go into your statement.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Kathleen Kreider. I work at Access Community Action Agency, so I live outside of the town of Tallinn. Is that enough? Um, one oh four Nathan Hill Road, Haventree, Connecticut. And I actually, I'm reading this on behalf of the residents at Parker Place. This relates to your agenda item eight point two. So to enter into the record, dear members of the Tallinn Town Council, we are writing on behalf of Access Senior Housing at Parker Place to express our full support for the proposed solar project and to respectfully urge this council to approve and sign the agreement at your upcoming meeting on June twenty fourth. This was written on June ninth. Uh, Access Senior Housing at Parker Place has always been committed to sustainable forward-thinking initiatives, not that not only benefit our residents, but also align with Tallinn's broader environmental and fiscal goals. The solar project presents a vital opportunity to reduce energy costs, promote energy independence, and contribute to the town's environmental stewardship. Many of our residents are on fixed incomes and are particularly vulnerable to rising utility costs. A, uh, the cost savings generated from this project will help keep our housing affordable, allowing our seniors to continue to live independently with dignity. At the same time, it supports the town's commitment to environmental sustainability and responsible energy use. We appreciate the careful evaluation of this project. Thank you uh that this project is already received and encourage the council to take the next step by approving the agreement on June twenty fourth. Your leadership in making this project a reality will have a meaningful and lasting impact on our community. Thank you for your attention and continued commitment to serving the residents of Tallinn. Sincerely, Parker Place Residents. And then it is signed by eighteen of the thirty, thirty-two, do you remember, Brian? Thirty-two members of the Parker Place community. So do you, do I give this to you?
Uh, no, it's Lisa.
No, Lisa, thank you so much.
Thank you. Right, um, we'll go online. Back to the room if there's anybody. Go to online one more time. Go to the room one more time. And I think it's a light night, so we'll close out public participation. Um, there are no public hearings tonight, so that brings us to reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. I don't have any reports. Brian, do you have anything from E H H D or Crog?
Uh, no, nothing new.
Okay. Um, we'll go off of that one, and then you go to reports of the town council liaisons.
If you want, someone from my house.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm uh, the reason I had in my head that you weren't meeting until July, but please go ahead.
That's okay. You wanna do it merely, you want me to do it?
All right.
I mean, you're the. All right, so we haven't met in a while, so couple things we went over, um, we voted on review when we had discussion on three forty, the hold and tank alarm. Um, we um passed it, it was ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the wire hold of the tank. Um, then we discussed estimates prepared, I believe, the town manager, a couple of others met with fire chief, assistant fire chief over um what they could do for station. Station four and station one. It's not gonna be as much as they were hoping, but basically, just fill my notes here. They're gonna do an addition to the apparatus bay, it's station one, replace existing set that slab on the grade exterior um drains and replace the oil and water pest refrigerator. And on that station, four forty, it's just the roof, um, roof grain ends being uh extended control joint. So we also voted on those. They're not the like air condition there, and that will be later if this money is left over for the new stations, which I know is a big study, very, I think it would be a very appropriate uh invest everything into one new station. And let me see what else. We voted, we and this, there's just discussion regarding next steps and construction timeline for station one and station four. Right? Did I miss anything else? Just looking real quick. You did a lot in thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Wow, that's not like good a lot.
We really did, so yeah, I'm very excited to see what happens. I think apparently we didn't discuss like when all that would be finished, I think I mentioned.
They provided a tentative schedule, but this gives um the design team their marching orders as far as proceeds, so they're hoping to have um and more information for us by the end of the summer and then move it to uh design and bid documents um in late winter, January-ish, which would allow us to take advantage of full construction season.
Okay, next spring.
Yeah.
What was, what was the first thing you mentioned? There's for funding for a tank?
Yeah, it's um. We had, I have some notes around the next day. Hold and tank at station three. That's right, apparently, um. Yeah.
So the tank.
To spend ten thou- I'm sorry, ten thousand nine hundred for the wire hold and tank.
So the tank has to have an overflow alarm, um, so that it there it'll it will, um, there'd be a notification if the tank was near its capacity and it was gonna overflow. So that is gonna be a hard-wired connection into the building, into the building electrical service, and then um there will be, that's in addition to what was already installed. So um we, we carved out a couple of options there and and went with a.
Yeah, there was the solar hold and tank.
Yeah, there were a couple of different options, so the one that we, the one that we carved out for that was the ten thousand dollars plus that Colleen is referring to.
Okay.
Yeah, that had, we just, I feel like that's been on the agenda for like months and weeks.
This is the only thing for water? Sorry if this is a question.
Yeah, it's so it's 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 basically, I think it's like wash water, right?
Yeah.
So it's, it comes from the drain inside the building, and it has to be pumped, and it has, it can't be just discharged.
Got it. Rinse off the trucked oil, but then they come in with salt on the winter and everything else, so all that kinda nonsense.
Yeah, so it's presumed to be that contaminated, but it needs environmental control.
That was, I believe, on the recognition of the P W and.
Yeah.
Or that one, if I.
Okay, sure, thank you. Um, any other questions for Colleen and Merrily? Right. On to uh reports of uh town council liaisons, um, go to Council Butler first.
Uh, so P C C Matt, um, they did uh what appears to be kind of like a postmortem of the uh Memorial Day celebration. Overall, everyone seems very happy with the turnout and how the event went. Um, next event that they'll be planning will be the scarecrow contest, which will begin um September twenty seventh, will run till October fourth with the voting from October sixth to October twenty-third. Uh, next meeting for P C C will be July tenth, assuming uh they have a forum.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Gudicheck?
Uh, sure, so uh mission on people's stories met last week. Talked about the safety sign, um, the area of the town, town green have been added. They talked about the lawsuit. They're waiting for the judge to rule, and Brian, I don't know if you know much more on that, I guess.
There is, and I I communicated exactly that to the P W C. P W T C.
Okay, okay. Um, and then the commission also discussed the possible exploring funding of the Hartford Foundation um for the, for ramp upgrade. Don't have one of the built in the bill, one of the buildings. And then one of the things that came up um was they started doing like a monthly newsletter on a topic that has to do with disabilities and to help inform people. One was done, I guess, the human service department doesn't have as much access as the manager's office as far as blasting out their monthly report. So I think um Susan was going to reach out to you, Brian, about, or Sarah Beth, I'm not sure, about possibly using the town e-blast to get it out to more people.
Okay.
So she hasn't.
Nothing, yeah.
She might see something.
Okay.
Cause they really have important things to put out there. One of theirs was, the newest one was the emergency uh preparedness during heat and also traveling because we don't realize that we might need things that went up. So that was an idea. And then uh they were also thinking about bringing somebody in the D O T to talk about transportation for people with disabilities. Think about that, and that, no, that was a long meeting, that was open two hours. I think so, yeah. But they're a great commission, they're wealth of knowledge, and um so whoever leads onto that will definitely learn a lot and the hard work that they do, and they've all been together for a very long time, which is impressive. Well, I'm not the best.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Moran?
Uh, the H D C, Historic Intermission Cancelled their June meeting because they had no C O As to prove, so I don't have.
You, Councilor Shay?
Um, poor Christian D B, unfortunately, I was off town with that. So I was not able to attend. I think we've been meeting minutes or.
Thank you. Councilor B B?
So um, planning is already met last night. Um, I was not able to attend the meeting. I did listen to the meeting, and then I read, read through the minutes. Um, they have an open public hearing on um the proposal to change the rear lot size um and access uh in residential, the entire residential zone in Tallinn, so that's the entire town where it's residential, it's pretty close to the town. Um, there was a lot of uh, a lot of back and forth and a lot of um conversation. Um, I, the minute, the minute should be posted to the website shortly. Um, I got the draft in my email, so I would encourage everybody to take a look at. Was said, the meeting was continued, so um a decision not be made until July tenth, I believe, is the next meeting at the earliest.
Yeah.
So that's a big hot item there.
Thank you.
Sorry. What's your, what's the recommended new size rear lots?
The proposed, um, so the, the um proposal was brought forward by private citizen. Um, and uh the the recommendation or the request actually is for um rear lots to be um reduced in size to two acres and then um for access, um, requirements for access to also be modified. And I can provide the, that wording um for the commission if it would want it, and I wanna be careful because the public hearing's open, and I wanna, I don't wanna.
Yeah. Is it currently five acres?
Yes, it's currently five acres, yes. It's been five acres for.
Yeah, yeah.
About five acres.
Is it a developable, it's asking this request, or is it uh just a prior?
It's private citizen. I don't know what the person's employment is.
So we'll get more updates after the meeting, obviously.
Yeah, and I would encourage people to call in or at least read the minutes and and take a look at the packet. And Dave did give, um, our town planner gave a, a, you know, very cogent um explanation of what the current status is and what was being proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I did not have any boards or committees be open the past couple of weeks, so I don't have anything to report. Um, so that brings us to new business, item eight one, approval of an amendment to the resolution twenty-five dash thirty, June thirty of twenty twenty-five suspense list in the amount of forty-five thousand sixty dollars and twelve cents, Brian. Thank you very much. So with me, I have, I know this kind of was the week I was not here, we kinda went over, the number changed, and we have to be exact uh for what we put on the record, and that number has changed with us. I have here in Bartlett to explain what this is and what the changes. Here in Bartlett is our tax collector.
Hi. Um, so before we sent the information to the tax collection or the collection agency, there was a payment made on one of the personal property accounts, which has dropped the amount that we're going to be putting into suspense.
What was the prior amount?
It, the prior one was.
I got it here, actually, uh forty-five thousand eight hundred and four dollars and eighteen cents. So it's not a significant change at all.
Like by seven hundred something, yeah.
I think that's a chance, well, that's good.
Yes, yeah, exactly, just exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions about item eight one? Seeing any, um, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as written in item eight one, page six of the packet. I think that's Councilor B B and second, Councilor Ann second says, is there any discussion? Or none, and seeing we're all in person tonight, um, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Unanimous, um, so that resolution passes. Going to item eight two, consideration and approval of a subordination, non-disturbance, and a term of agreement between the town of Tallinn, Access Housing at Parker Place Limited Partnerships, and C E F I A Holdings L L C, right? Uh, thank you, Chair. So uh, as, as you heard in the public comment, uh, this is consideration to put a solar system on the roof of Parker Place. So we had no cost to the town. Um, we have tried to chase down um everything we could for possibilities of things that can go wrong. Uh, we worked out a contract. Rick has approved, reviewed, and approved said contract as have uh the legal side from Access. Uh, this is a project that will save the residents, as you heard, of Parker Place um some money on their uh electric bill. As far as, you know, the average Tallinn resident, it doesn't sound like a lot of money. But for our residents in Parker Place, any amount of money is a lot of money, and it's significant to them uh and important uh to us, uh, I believe, uh, at least in our, our human services department uh to go ahead and forward this project. Again, it's been reviewed uh by our building inspector uh for holes, uh, everything that we could possibly find. Town attorney, um, and we believe the contract is safe for the town to enter in and allow this solar project to, to. Thank you. Um, is there any questions for town manager? Uh, Councilor B B?
Please define a tornment.
It's my question too. If I, give me a second to Google it.
Or maybe one of our attorneys can define, cause I think that the other, the other terms of the lease are pretty, are pretty common.
Um.
Can I jump in there for a second?
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, Emily Basham is here from Green Bank. Emily, I don't know if you can speak to that word or.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this is Emily Basham from the Connecticut Green Bank. Cepia Holdings um is a subsidiary, so we're the counterparty in the agreement. Um, a tournament, and and I'm not an attorney, um, is that we would just be acknowledging um and recognizing the town as the fee owner or the landlord of the parcel. So in the event that the town took over the property, we would recognize um the fee owner as the landlord. So that's, a torn means acknowledge according to Google.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Never, never say something simply when you can say it in a complicated way.
Y'all learned it.
That part of the reason I read the item out is cause I wanted to say it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, any other questions?
Uh, just that the, it looks like the uh planning and zoning commission made a positive referral, bought it, so that's, that's good that they took a look at it.
And which I do wanna thank Megan Masa, um, Dave Corcoran, Bev, uh, and uh Jim Pacwin for their efforts of getting that prepared for uh zoning, and I, and I thank zoning for giving us the uh positive referral.
Thank you, Mel C. President's.
One of the things that that was discussed, um, I, I attended that meeting um virtually. Um, one of the things that was discussed is the um responsibility for maintenance replacement and removal during the lease term if the owner changes, and I think we just addressed that when we defined this term a tournament as to how that would, that would flow. So I am satisfied as to that, as long as the other commissioners don't have any questions.
Uh, just a general question, cause um I wasn't, I don't think any of us from the council, when the whole Parker Place was established, can we just kinda walk through? We don't need a twenty-minute lesson, but it's like a high-level overview of what the ownership situation is there, cause we have a town of Tallinn, and then there's Parker Place, and then they run the. We leave it out, town owns it, we lease it out to them for, I think it was fifty more years back, you have to remember the details, we just went over this.
Over that, and it's the Access Agency is actually, uh, they run it, they leased it from us, and it's about a seventy-six year lease at this point, and it's been a good relationship. I work very closely with them.
Okay.
Residence building, and um if it wasn't, I will say if it wasn't for access coming in, the building probably would still be naked.
Mm-hmm.
Stay and cost them over seven million, four million dollars to, to re, to renovate it.
Okay. Thank you, yeah. Just want a little history of, um, what was going on. Um, the other question I had is if this gets approved, what would be the timeline for our next steps for the project?
I think Emily's the best person to answer.
Yeah, sure, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
So this project, um, once approved, um, we would finalize the, the lease agreement with the town. This is the last, excuse me, with Access Agency, it's the last missing piece. We would onboard the installation partner that we've selected through a competitive solicitation um to start working on the full engineering of the system. Um, and then they would move forward the project development process in coordination with the Connecticut Green Bank. Um, we're sort of the project manager and system owner. So that would include um doing full system engineering, submitting an application to the utility to receive contingent approval to interconnect the project to the grid, um submitting the project into the town of Tallinn billing department for um permit review. Um, and then once those are returned back with approval, we would finalize all the construction plans um with Access Agency, and then we would move into construction. Um, and construction would probably take about two months, and then we would look to energize the system and start generating benefits from it.
Thank you. So once we approve this, sounds like the town, this doesn't come back to council, it's, this goes through. Unless we were down the road to amend the contract, no. Okay, yeah, sometimes these come back multiple times for different reasons, but this sounds like it's the last one. Okay. Any other questions on item eight two? Right, um. I'll entertain a motion to adopt a draft resolution as written in E two.
So moved.
Uh, moved by Councilor Buckler, is there a second?
Second.
Uh.
Unless, unless we're competing in the.
Yeah.
You know?
Um, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, extensions, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you to everybody who uh gave some background information on that item.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along to item eight three, uh, we have our resolution um to set a public hearing for bonding for capital items. I'll turn it over to Brian to give us some background information on this. Thanks. Based on the amount that we're going out to bond for, uh, to bring this uh to council uh every year, and she, those who appeared last summer, remember? Uh, this is this year's batch of items going out to bond, a consideration uh of a resolution appropriating, it says lawnmower, but it's really a roadside uh tractor and boom, uh that, that trims all of our roadsides. That item, uh, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand for a truck, uh, five hundred and sixty-five uh for basketball court replacement and authorizing the issuance of, I'm sorry, that's two basketball uh courts being replaced, and authorizing the issuance of up to uh one point one four seven zero five five bonds and notes uh to finance for appropriations. So this is just to set the public hearing on July eighth, that's all this item is. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Brian? Uh, Councilor Ann?
This is all stuff that was sort of built into our.
Defined into the capital bu- budget and then, yeah, uh, capital plan and then the budget. Okay, thank you.
So when do we determine the, the uh length of the bond? Is it at the, at the meeting that we're going to have, or can we have to establish the time?
Yeah. So at the meeting, at the public hearing, meeting, we're gonna be discussing about um a week. It's with the bonds, and then once we issue, we'll be talking about, about the terms.
And we'll have our, our financial advisor um here as well.
Our counsel.
Yeah, our, our bond counsel specifically.
Okay, so first step is approve, getting a, get the town to a public hearing to approve this, then we'll set the terms, bond, get afterward?
Yep, at the public hearing.
At the public, yes. So both of you done.
Yeah, we can discuss all that.
Okay.
Kind of similar to what we did um with the road bonding that happened late last year, early this year, we had a discussion after it was officially approved.
Ahead of that, I'd like to be able to um to get uh an estimate of the of the lifespan of these improvements, as well as the lifespan of tractor, um, as far to, uh, far to that, maybe if we could.
Okay. I believe the lifespan would be in the capital report, the capital budget, but I, I'll get all that for you.
Okay.
And Scott will be here. Okay, for that. Uh, Megan here for the basketball courts, um, and Scott will be here for the, the truck as well. Maybe just to note, um, the first item in the original packet was, uh, slight error, it was written as lawnmower, it's a roadside mower. Um, so much more substantial piece of equipment than a, any bond or. Any other questions upon item eight three? This mission, this already was approved in our budget, normal budget process, it's just part of the way our procedure is written, that we need to have a public hearing and formally go on it afterwards. All right, um, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing on July eighth.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Questions that you, Jennifer O'Donnell, or does it, is it really much of a difference? Should that be, so should I make it more bio, lawnmower?
Right, well, and then the language will be changed for the public hearing. Uh, we already, with that came back from the bond attorney came back written like that. We picked it up this morning like this is.
All right. Well, that'll be the.
Right.
The capital plan has correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't run house everything.
Okay. Yeah. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, extensions, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, um, this moves us to item eight four, consideration of a resolution clarifying the use of three hundred thousand dollars for the utility internal service fund, approved on April third, twenty twenty-five. Over to Brian. All right, thanks. In order to uh use this use of, uh, we, our town clerk has recommended that we actually adopt a resolution uh to, to uh define how we're gonna use this money. I, I have Mike Wilkinson on, uh, he'll explain further what, what is happening here. Mike? Yeah, you're muted if you're trying to talk, Mike.
I'm sorry, I was on finance for a couple of minutes, what, I, I had to do something. Where were we, sorry?
The, uh, use of funds, Mike, three hundred thousand, uh, the utility internal service fund.
Oh, that's a Yulita, that would be like Yulita should.
That's okay, so on April third, um, this year, we talked about, um, for Board of Education, three hundred thousand dollars of use of. To offset their, um, basically utility expenses that they put in the budget. Um, we had, uh, motion, separate motion voted, but we didn't have a resolution. So we just clarifying that having in a resolution, formal resolution for BOE to utilize those funds. Uh, in, uh, Lucif, there are two assigned fund balances, one for town, one for BOE, and BOE has six hundred fourteen thousand dollars available. So we allow to use three hundred thousand dollars, leaving some residual for the following, uh, capital plan improvements that they do have in the plan. So we just formalizing in the res- form of resolution, that's all what it is.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Right, um, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution in item eight four.
So moved.
Um, by councillor Miranda, is there a second?
Aye.
All right, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's, any, uh, nays, extensions, nope, all right, that passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, that moves us to item E five, consider a resolution to declare sample IT equipment as obsolete from the Board of Education.
And attached is, uh, the, the, uh, stuff that they want to get rid of, that is obsolete and all from the Board of Education. We have to approve, improve it, approve it in order for them to do it.
Thank you. Any questions on the item? Right, hearing none, um, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution in item eight five. Sir, any discussion? Or sorry, is there a second? All right, second by councillor Bibi, um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Extensions, nays, nope, all right, uh, motion passes unanimously. Right. Item eight six, um, consideration of a resolution to approve the revised ambulance fund policies and procedures.
As you know, we have a, uh, ambulance fund policy here in which, uh, revenue is generated, uh, when, and when many times when an ambulance goes out for a call. So specifically things like, uh, ID four, if there's an accident, uh, we can bill out, that money's put into a fund, uh, there's billing, billing on the ambulance side, uh, and billing on the fire side as well. Uh, the ambulance fund did not have specifically designed policy, uh, it was brought to our attention, uh, to assist in developing one for council. Uh, and that's where we are here, attached is the old copy Islamic as well as a redline copy of the new, uh, ambulance fund policy.
Thank you, Brian. I'll just add in two other things, um, uh, kind of clarify the open issues that we left this at the last meeting. Um, so one was, uh, Chief Laitel, um, two weeks ago had raised some concerns about the language, um, and after discussing, um, the, the current draft as is. Um, he's withdrawn, he's withdrew those concerns, the section E, exceptions to expenditures considered adequate, um, for his purposes to allow some, some wiggle room with the, the, uh, policies needed for something other than EMS. Um, additionally, uh, our attorney, Rick Conti, um, I asked him about the threshold amount. Um, because I was, wanted to make sure he understood our intent when we, when, at the draft language, um, I think we put in TBD. And I wanted to make sure he understood that, um, we weren't saying that we wanted to not have a threshold or we wanted to be flexible, um. And his recommendation was is that he would actually prefer the council to not have a number written into the policy, but rather have that set time to time. Perhaps to make it a bit easier to keep up with inflation and things like that. So, um, in other words, the policy you're looking, um, at has not changed from the previous meeting, but we spent two weeks to do our homework, so.
I was wondering.
Yeah. Yeah, that was intentional. Uh, any questions or comments?
And we're, we're good with the idea that we're not specifying a threshold amount right now?
I think we would need to have that as a separate agenda item, like, that on the July eighth meeting.
No, I mean, I'm not, and I, and I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're solid with, that if somebody comes and questions this and says, this shall be done, or that, that has happened, that.
Yeah.
It's actually going to happen or it has happened and you can't get off that on it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think make sure to have, have that in place by the next meeting.
All right, yeah, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, so chances we would need it, the next couple of weeks are pretty, oh, fun.
It's like a unison.
All right.
Um, okay, so I'll entertain a, uh, motion to adopt the draft resolution in night, in item eight six.
Some of them.
All right, moved by councillor Bibi, is there a second?
Second.
Councillor Shay seconded the motion, um, any discussion?
I have a question. Um, as far as expenditures go historically, have we used the spend for anything other than ambulances in the past?
Yeah. Um, I believe we provided up this, but yes, fire, ambulance, but we have never deviated from.
I'm using it fire related.
Yes, under, under the advisement of our public safety director and fire chief Laitel. Uh, and then coordinated, uh, in previous years with our finance director and how to best, uh, utilize that fund to purchase equipment typically based on our capital plan, uh, where we need the money from.
So I, I guess my question then from that is why are we still limiting this only to expenditures of ambulances? And we have to go to town council for further approval, it just, it feels like we're, we're limiting this too much. Uh, if we, if we notoriously always use this only for fire department, why are we making this so narrow now and making it more difficult?
Like it's making it more difficult that she was okay with that?
I think so, yeah, so it's, it's not strictly just for ambulances, so the way, way it's written is emergency medical services, it's a little bit broader than just strictly ambulances. Um, and then in section E, um, there is an opportunity to use it for any fire department purchases, um, with, with council approval. But in practice, they wouldn't really limit anything because, um, in general, this gets approved with a capital budget, which we vote on anyway. Um, and any large unexpected expenditure, if you had to buy it outside of the cycle, it possibly probably come to council. So I kind of see this policy as more just kind of clarifying what we're doing and what was formalized, yeah, that's a better word.
Let me ask this question. Name something we've used this fund for that's not ambulance or EMS related, anything.
Fire related?
Yeah, sure.
Safety equipment.
Okay, so prior to this policy being in place, if we want to use this fund for safety equipment, what's the process?
Well, we both, like, let's say John wants seventy five thousand dollars for, to upgrade his, uh, safety equipment, he said it's a wrong number.
Yeah.
Uh, he would have that in his capital plan. When Yolita looks and I look at the capital plan, at the numbers, we look at the best way, should it come out of the general plan, should it come out of here, should we apply for a grant? Should we use the ambulance fund? Between, uh, typically a chief and the finance director, uh, they decide where that, that fund, uh, should come from. I know that Chief Laitel and I do not love the idea of this policy, but like Jake said, when we come to the capital plan, if we have something fire. If we identify something that's specifically fire, now keep in mind, fire goes to all our EMS calls basically. Uh, if, if we have something specifically for fire during the capital, we would notify you guys, hey? This is something, uh, that's outside of the EMS specifically for fire, um, we just need your approval to approve it in the capital plan, so it's not.
We're just adding an extra step to get it approved, though, under this policy. And I think that's where my question is, is why are we adding more steps? If we've notoriously only used this fund appropriately for the fire department, we're just making things more difficult. What's the justification for that?
I think I've talked about it many meetings, but, and especially Yolita, right, Yolita, it's the thing of going down a certain amount. And I would, you know, it's obviously we use the money for certain things, but then the certain things over the years, I've noticed we probably shouldn't be using. It, in account, from a capital, so we have policies for everything, that this is no different than any other policy.
What, what, what you used to be, I definitely shouldn't have used before.
I've talked about it before, like the, um, just the simple things, you were putting a beam in the fire department, seventy thousand dollars. I don't think that should have, that was qualified, and here you could make the argument to keep in the building up, but to me, a capital item.
Beam, the beam was, reason for the beam, and I wasn't against it, but the fire chief really wanted it. Reason for the beam, it went to the squad fire truck, the squad fire truck was longer and badder than, uh, anticipated, and it made it difficult for people around of our public safety personnel in there. So it wasn't like a structural thing, this was, this was to help fit the new apparatus in there and unanticipated, um, help. Could we have gotten money elsewhere? Um, yes, but again, this is, these are decisions made by, uh, them, I don't think that we shouldn't have used it. Again, it wasn't, wasn't like, hey, we want to build a wing on the, the fire department, this was for equipment to fit in the station.
Yeah, I still dis- I totally disagree with it because we could have used it for emergency. Oh, that's my opinion, that's just one, one thing, um, that I, but that's just me, I, you know.
So it feels like we're just trying to strongarm the town into, for a very specific purpose when we're using it appropriately. As far as, and, uh, as it stands right now, I can't support it, I could support it if it was more broad, if it included fire generally. Um, I think that is appropriate and I, it sounds like we've been using the fund appropriately thus far. Um, I just don't want to create an extra step so that they can use these funds, uh, for other things that are fire related.
So I'm just a little confused where the extra step is, cause like in the process from this year's capital budget, correct me if I'm wrong, but like the, he was in the capital budget. And it was taken from the fire or the ambulance policy, or the ambulance fund, sorry. And we voted on that as a council when we approved the entire capital budget. Right, so that was all under section E. And now we do that, that's, that's kind of way, why I see this policy, it's basically just, um, writing down what we're doing. Because people's goals change, right, like Brian, Yolita and Chief Laitel manage this fund very well, but you know, they're not goals forever. So it's good to have a policy that just standardizes and clarifies it, um, because you just never know what future holds. That's just really all that we're trying to do here, and I feel like in the standard capital budget process, this really shouldn't change anything, that's the way I see it. But councillor Miranda?
Um, so, uh, I get what you're saying, Jacob, about like functionally, it might not be much of a difference, and I also am not opposed to a policy. Um, I'll just reiterate that, I, like, I think it was a good idea to formalize what we were doing, and so I liked the idea of making the change we talked about at the last meeting to include fire or whatever the language was that Chief Laitel proposed. Um, just because I think that just more accurately captures what, what we've been doing or what we're intending for it to do, I don't know, um. That's, that's the only issue that I have, I, but other, but I, I, I think it's a good idea to have a policy. I agree, um, that was, that, that's just the only, uh, point that I'm something about.
So I, I would say I am absolutely neutral on this, um, if we do it, great, if we don't, great. Uh, and I bet I would assume that the chief is, uh, the same, uh, or a little bit not wanting to do it. That being said, our firefighters are cross-trained as EMS. That would make this a very great policy to begin with. So basically, every firefighter, every firefighter that we have this career is our EMS. So if we're buying it for them, we're buying it for EMS, uh, in most cases, you know, unless it's a hose. You know, or something along those lines, and then that, then the burden will shift to the taxpayer to have to cover.
Yeah, no, and I get that, I think that's probably true, and I think what Jacob said is probably true as well. I just think that, um, just my preference would have been to just say that, if that's what we're sort of like intending, but we're just saying that there's, there are ways to do that. But, um, but, but I understand what you're, what you're saying.
I think there should be a policy, I, I don't, I'm not against a policy at all, I just think that we're making this policy more difficult than it needs to be. I think we can include expenditures to include all fire related expenditures, however that language could be. And then you take out having to go to the town council for, for approval of one time capital purchases for, you know, other Tolland fire related things. That's exactly what we're doing now without the policy. I mean, I think, I think generally what we're saying is they're doing it right now, they're using the funds correctly now. Uh, but maybe when we have a shift of power, or not power, but shift of, uh, staff, thank you. That they may not understand, and so we need to memorialize this in a policy so that when somebody else comes in, they have something written, say this is what we're supposed to use this for. But I, I think if you, we should be just capturing what we're already doing that's working, that's correct, as opposed to trying to make this more complicated. I think you're accomplishing exactly what we're doing right now by including in expenditures, just all fire related.
Would change that language to, um, EMS, EMS, and/or fire, is that what you would change it to?
Yeah, so cha- I would change D to include, you know, whatever the appropriate language would be, to include all fire related expenses. That you're not going outside of this fire department realm, using this fund. Uh, that way, if it's not EMS and it's not ambulance related, but it's fire related. That they're allowed, that, you know, it, it's part of this policy without having to take this extra step of then going to town council and having town council approve the one time. And then, you know, we're dealing with the, the language of, you know, uh, the predetermined, da, 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 da. I think you can simplify it and kind of memorialize what we're already doing right now by just including fire related services in general. And I think that kind of encompasses really what the purpose of it is for, I mean, it does include ambulance, it does include, you know, but like I said, there's other things I'm sure Chief Laitel could think of. That these funds could go to that we've previously used these funds for, that just don't fit into these little categories. And we can eliminate having to go to town council for approval because it doesn't fit into section B. I think if we made it more broad, it would do exactly what we're doing now, like, but it's on paper.
Thank you, councillor Buckler, um. Like some of what.
Isn't that what you're speaking for though?
I think. See, I think councillor Buckler, don't let me put words in your mouth, what you're saying is strike section E and just have an expenditure section. Save it just saying equipment related urgency services added. And fire department or something more inclusive, is that?
Yeah, I don't.
You're saying?
I think you're correct, I think it makes E not necessary when you include all fire. Um, I can't personally think of a situation where they would want to use the funds for something fire related that wouldn't be appropriate. Um, and then, uh, the town manager said, you know, EMS is fire, fire is EMS, they're all kind of encompassed together. I would want them to be able to use the funds as broadly as possible without having to add the additional step of E. I think if, if you expand G, then it makes E unnecessary, so yes, essentially, that's what I.
Is there distinction because it's a capital expense?
Is there a distinction?
Distinction because of, uh, because of, so capital expenses is something that would be.
Over ten thousand.
Over, yes, one time, so, so vehicle, longer lived, um, investment, right? Something that you would amortize possibly, and in a different circum.
Something for our finance director to consider, uh, as we move into, like, looking at the different items that are on the capital plan, do we bump out, do we pay now, do we, you know, and how we're gonna pay?
So the, so the question is, do we have a threshold now that requires approval of, by the town council for, our capital expenditure, a capital expenditure over a certain amount anyway?
Yes.
So whether it was in this policy or somewhere else, if it was over a certain amount, it would still have to come to us.
Yeah, I mean, large, what is it, uh, I can't remember the exact number, what it has to, what it has to get approved by town.
Yeah, and I don't remember the number either, that's why I'm asking it, because if we already have that requirement in the charter, then if we're stating it again here, to your point, it might be unnecessary.
Yeah, the only difference would be in this policy, we're limiting the, the items that you can use this fund for. And you're having to go to town council for approval of things that don't fit into this ambulance, you know, EMS category. And I, what I'm saying is, why are we doing that? You know, EMS category. And I, what I'm saying is, why are we doing that? Why can't we just expand it to fire? And eliminate having to deal with that.
So just a question too. I, I know right now you say that every fireman is an EMS person. But what if, what if the fire department changes its, its structure in such a way that you've got firemen and then you have people who are strictly EMS? The people who are strictly EMS may have an issue with taking money from this fund and using it towards the fire department. Because you're saying, you know, we need this money for what we do, not what your fire department people do. So again, then it would require going to the council to say, okay, you know, we understand that dilemma here, that the council vote on it. So it's built formally in that regard. And then secondly, to your, to your comment, um I don't know if we want anything that sort of counteracts what other parts of the charter state. So if you have capital expenditures that are life greater than here, those need to get approved before they can be spent. So um keeping, if you have something in here that says, well, you don't need approval because it's, it's different here, then that might be
This wouldn't, this wouldn't supersede the charter because the charter would put um.
I don't think we would have put in the policy you don't need.
Yeah, this, this exception is only for capital purchases, right? It's, it's in the first sentence. It says, has authority proof funding for one time capital purchases related to the fire department on a case by case basis, and then it qualifies.
I, I think, yeah, my, I think, I think what, what would happen is hypothetically, if this changed, right? It would go away. The charter, which would always control anyways with coming to us for the capital things, that's what would still continue to govern. And so I think E is just unnecessary. If, I mean, depending what we talk about as far as like D, I guess.
But yeah, but if you put it into D, you get rid of B, then it kind of goes, it seems like it goes against the charter because now you don't need that approval. Because you're saying, well, fire department can do whatever they want with it. So I guess subject to the approval by.
Yeah, I guess the charter. That's, uh, at least I'll just speak for myself. I don't know what anybody else is feeling. It's like, I think a straightforward solution is to just like add in and fire related services or whatever indeed, people want to do that. I believe that it's gonna be like, you can't, you, you don't have to come through us if you're violating.
We can put the language not to supersede.
Right, or, you know, per
The charter.
For the charter.
The charter, whatever. Um, just, you know.
You know what that is? I was gonna hook up that number. Do you know what that amount is?
Yeah, I can find it. But, but, but E, regardless of if there's an E or not an E for a certain level of capital expenditures, it has to come before us anyway.
Right.
We just don't know that amount though. Yeah, I would say that that amount is gonna be more than it's ever in the ambulance fund uh to be given.
It is.
My concern is just if we're gonna be using a big chunk on like, say, a squad truck. Put a down payment of, I don't even know, three hundred thousand dollars, I can wipe out the ambulance fund and now you don't have it. The ambulance where, that's where you need it. And Joe, you're right, not every person is a firefighter, EMT a lot on the weekend. A volunteer, like your daughter even, EMT only. So it's not.
We wouldn't buy something specifically for his daughter. And I understand, but what is the?
Probably, I don't even know, Joe. He might go, there's a lot of college kids.
So, and even the, even the, you know, the overall structure of the fire department can change where you could have paid, full time paid EMT person that comes in. And they're gonna want, they're gonna be more concerned that the fire department's taking funding from them.
Whatever you guys want to do, but just, you know, you split it, you split the abundant this much. That's why I thought an amount would be good. Yeah, I think if you don't go like this much, like spend this much. It's kind of like not like, you know what I mean? Like, that's why it's a hundred thousand dollars, whatever that amount is.
I think that'll
I think that's what everybody is probably saying, like this is certain amount. You don't want to go over.
You can get over complicated and it does need to be over complicated.
I think, I think once part of the problem, need to help, some counselor, you check's concerns and other people's concerns. But um, we don't have that amount here, but I think that will help prevent
I think so.
reckless use of the fund, which, you know, it's not on the agenda tonight, but once we have that, there will be um, you know, a limit that can be used to, should prevent it being drained or used irresponsibly. Um, and then on top of that, at ninety nine percent of cases, it's gonna be through the regular capital budget. And then um, for anything large, it would probably come to council anyway. Like I, I don't know. Yeah, like Brian, for, for just sake of art, like if you had squad truck. I don't know how much it is, a half a million dollars or something. All right, anyway, million, half a million, um, gets in an accident, it's totaled, you need to buy a new one tomorrow. And that I would imagine that comes to council in one form or another, right? And that's an epic.
I would love to go off on that hypothetical, but I won't. But yes, that would go to council. You'd have a hard time getting it past me, but yes, it would go to, definitely go to council.
Yeah.
Or for your approval, um, and we would likely have to for something like that on a side of my balance.
Yeah.
Would that be a public camera?
All of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm just trying to think. Like, I mean, if it was a small thing, like you needed to buy a few new, um, don't know the term. But I know we do buy like personal protective equipment out of, that gets put capital sometimes. Like if something's small like that, it's probably not going to be that impactful to the fund in general. But if it was something big, like an apparatus, it would probably come to council anyways, also.
So anything that over ten thousand dollars and the lifespan of um eight years, it counts as a capital.
Yeah.
Capital project. So if we need to buy something in that also those um parameters, we have to appropriate funds. So we have to come to council. We can't just do something.
Oh, over ten thousand?
Yes.
Oh, so then.
I was gonna do a capital.
We only have to be small items anyway.
Yeah, so I think that essentially alleviates the concern because
Yeah, I think, again, I'll just speak for myself.
Yeah.
Not true. I think, I, I think it's not, I try and, we're complicated. I think it's just, if I'm understanding, Council Buckler, it would just be batting the words and fire related services. Just at least from my perspective, I'll just speak for myself. If we're memorializing what we're doing with the fund, which I think is a good idea, right? Because we don't know what will be in the future and all these other things, there should be a policy. I think that just more accurately captures what we're doing with it. Um, and I agree that, but functionally, you know, how it comes to us does.
Um, I think the only time it is used for fire, uh, fire related certain equipment is if they seek an exception, right? So they can't, they can't just run out and buy that, that exception falls into place. And I think that's why, that's why E is there. So even if you want to get rid of E and then say, you know, fire equipment's subject to kind of this, as the exception, subject to the rules of charter.
Uh, but I don't think that's how it works now.
I, I think the way, I think what we're coming to is that anytime it's over ten thousand dollars.
Yep.
It has to go to council, period.
Yep.
Right? So like, there's no circumstance today where you could take any significant amount out of this fund for creating council approval.
Let's say it's nine, let's say it's ninety five hundred dollars, then they could just take it for a fire equipment without asking anybody?
You could, but there's, I mean, what's the balance on this fund today? Like it's
You still have to appropriate, still have to create the, so the capital or capital funds and general fund are appropriated funds. So we, to use the funding, we need to come in front of you to ask to appropriate and create a project.
Whether it's EMS or fire?
Yes.
So Going through the capital plan and it goes to you, everything.
But that's the capital plan. So it's ninety five hundred dollar expense that we're, that, you know, doesn't, it's applicable to ten thousand cap. And it's not subject to any depreciation, then they can do whatever they want.
There are some times during the year where John will say, hey, we need this. Um, and that's typically not a lot of money.
Yeah.
And he'll
We talked about fire blankets, right?
Yeah, like that. Uh, and he'll meet with the finance director and we'll figure out how we can get it. Sometimes the best option is the ambulance fund. And, and so, but typically it doesn't, it's smaller, so it doesn't hit you. If it's bigger, over ten, you know, it's our capital plan. Uh, and planning it out and how we're gonna fund it.
But if it was ninety five hundred dollars for, for blankets or whatever, they, under what is happening now, they don't come to us.
Correct.
Okay.
I tell you what the
Yeah, no, no, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying, yeah, okay.
That is fun. I, for reference, the balance, what's the balance?
It is a balance, like two hundred, I can't remember. It's usually around, it's usually around two, two fifty in that range.
Yeah, I wanna say. Maybe, yeah, but never talk like a nine thousand would never be a
Well, we're very responsible with how, you, you know, you see how we are with funds.
Yeah, but unlikely to be a significant chunk out of the fund, is what I'm trying to say. Yeah.
No, and we, you do, as I mentioned before, you do get that, um, then we present the capital plan. And we present the five years, whatever we use to sponsor, we present the fund balance, like what are we gonna, you know, use for and how much is left? Five years, so it's transparent.
But there's one time, Brian mentioned, there's one time expenditures that, that aren't listed in that plan, that they just need, and they take.
Jacob, I have a question.
Sure.
So can I make a motion to amend that language?
That's parliamentary. Who made the motion? I thought someone did, and then there was discussion.
We did.
Yeah.
Somebody, two people.
I felt like
One person second.
Bring the motion, nice secmo, you're right, I think that's
Yeah, so do we need to withdraw the motion?
Or amend.
Merely made it, Joe.
Uh, second, okay.
Do I, so I will, do I need to?
I think you could amend. Well, if it's coming from
Yeah, so I, I'm
Not certain, but probably just
Um, with, start to make a motion to withdraw my motion.
I think you should withdraw it.
Easy enough.
Okay, um, all right, so that motion has been withdrawn.
Okay.
Council Buckler.
So I will make a motion to amend the language and I'm hoping my computer stays alive for the next two seconds. Um, I think it's set section D, uh, to, and now it's gonna die. Um, to include all fire related, however, however the motion was with EMS. But include the language for fire related. Chris, help me out here. I need my
Can I propose some language?
Thank you, go ahead.
Maybe, but um, uh, the ambulance fund, so this is in subsection D. The ambulance fund will primarily be used to purchase or replace ambulances, maintain or repair existing ambulances and acquire equipment related to emergency medical services and or fire related services.
Correct.
Additionally, it will cover, this is already in it, but additionally, it will cover any unexpected costs associated with emergency medical services and fire related services.
I think that's appropriate. And then I would strike uh subsection E.
So, all right, two people, I think we're making.
I know, it's getting weird.
Actually, here's my hope on this one.
Is that your bucket?
That is my motion.
I think it would be better to reword it and, and put it back on, on the subsequent agenda. And then try to prove this uh editing done. Because I think like tell, like tell she'll look at it again to make sure he's okay.
And I'd like to take a look at it.
Yeah, right. So I don't know.
Additionally, it will cover unexpected costs. EMS, medical services, that's everything. That's not just like ambulances, medical services can be any, that's pretty, you know, broad too. But yeah, I would, I would table it and
Re- rewrite it, let's put it on the next agenda.
So I think you made seventy five percent of that, you like to.
I, I think we should table, uh, table, yeah, table this to our next meeting. With, with, I think, sort of back to where we were at the last meeting, um, on this point, with the change that we discussed, assuming that Chief Laitel is okay with it and Rick is okay with it, that, you know, just mentioning the fire services.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going, I'll just repeat, repeat it for clarity. Um, I'll talk to Brian and counsel. Um, and direct Brian to amend the draft, striking section E, adding it and or fire related services to section D. And have that draft reviewed with Chief Laitel for feedback and then prepare for July eighth agenda. So.
If we're gonna strike E, preference in D, then the, that it references back to the requirements under the charter for capitalization. Yeah, I think that deserves, yeah, I'm good with that.
Jacob, Jacob, could I make one comment?
Yeah.
Um, John's specific language was and or fire rescue related items. Just so you didn't have rescue in there, just because I, I had the email that John sent at the last meeting. So I just wanted to state that it was and or fire rescue related items.
Yeah, I think that, that's, that, thank you, Mike, and that's certainly fine with me. Yeah, I mean, that, that's, I think where, at least I was coming from was
You wanted to
That place with, from Chief Laitel. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, I have that in my notes. I'll email it. I'll CC you on it, so. All right. So that motion is tabled. Um, and that brings us to last business item on the agenda, item eight six. Uh, consideration of a resolution to, or no, that was what we did. Item eight seven, uh, yeah, vacancies.
Yeah, go ahead. We have one, um, John Livingston, this is just another addition to the tech advisory board. I know, uh, Sarah Beth is slowly being, uh, getting responses back from everyone on the board that wants to renew their term. Um, so this is just an additional person.
One month.
Okay, we'll hold out, maybe, maybe on an upcoming agenda, um, gonna prime an eye, we're, we're gonna look, track him down. Um, yeah, uh, so this is just, you know, John has already been on the advisory board.
Okay, um, the term is, it might be a typo because it's going back in time here with this term. June twenty four, twenty twenty five to May twenty 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 five.
Oh, good catch. Um, that is a good catch. I assume it should be twenty seven or how long is it?
It's only two years.
Yeah, two year term. Sorry.
No, this is okay.
Oh, I would, I would move to reappoint John Livingston, the technology advisory board before the term. June twenty four, twenty twenty five through May twenty 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 seven.
All right, votes have been made in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
A's abstentions, passes you need to miss late. Okay, um, that completes our new business section. Uh, we don't have any old business, so I'll go to Brian for his town manager report.
Uh, great. So, uh, thank you. I'd like to open with the, the, uh, after the approved, uh, referendum with about one point five uh percent uh increase in town here. Uh, we were left to make some reductions, um, to our budget and make some cuts. I mean, uh, to our, our budget here in the town of town, uh, starting out at three point one two to fill referendum on, uh, May sixth, getting down to a one point zero six percent increase, which was on the town's point zero six percent increase. Uh, we needed to come up with roughly two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. Uh, that includes about ten thousand from the recreation department, uh, over sixty, roughly sixty thousand from town administration. Uh, that is a hundred and fifty five thousand, um, from public works. Uh, just under a thousand from human services, uh, roughly sixty from fire and three thousand, uh, from, uh, the finance department. Many of these cuts were already discussed prior. Um, some of the, the newer highlights, um, we are gonna hopefully get a, a reduction in a salary on, in relation to the new rec director as we're losing a senior, our rec director. Thank you to Mike Wilkinson, who did an up to the minute, uh, cost analysis based on our health insurance. He did find, uh, twenty eight thousand dollars there. Uh, we cut a good chunk of change out of salt, engineering. Uh, we're leaving a, we're leaving a laborer vacant through January first, a driver. Uh, we, you know, fingers crossed, we don't have a, a snowstorm before January first, but even if we did, we need, uh, we should be able to cover it. But typically there are big storms or later in the year, not kind of where that we said that. Um, elimination of a reclassification position. Again, public works got hit the hardest. Um, the finance department, counseling, training and development, some, a lot of smaller things, uh, the other departments, uh, all around. Uh, the, the net, net here is that we don't have to cut any positions uh, in, in the way we're doing it here. So, um, lots of cuts everywhere. Old thing, we're crossing our fingers on salt, crossing our fingers on engineering and a lot of those things that we don't have to spend them. But so, uh, that's where we are on the reductions that we needed to make, um, after the referendum passed. Uh, moving on, um, Crandall's is open. Uh, as you know, the pond is open. There was a, a, a bit of a, a bump in the road with, with, um, staff the first day, uh, yesterday of the camps going when the camp Bump in the road with, with, um, staff, the first day, uh, yesterday of the camps going, when the camp counselors left, they locked the gate to Crandall's. Uh, hung up the close sign at about five o'clock, um, they got out that, you know, that, that, the town closed it on the hottest day of the year at five o'clock. Um, I reached out to anyone that asked, you know, it's actually open till eight, I actually went to the pond, uh, went down, the people were there, I'm like, you're fine there, uh, you know, it's, it's open. And, and, uh, what happened, uh, has been corrected, the staff goes, the staff at eight o'clock goes, locks up the gate for the pond. And asks everyone, uh, to leave, and that's, that is effective moving forward now until we leave, um, in thereabouts. Uh, in regards to the rec department, we, the, the director, as you know, uh, had left and went to Weathersfield. Uh, I, I had a feeling we get a lot of applicants, we got roughly thirty applicants. We, we interviewed five, every one of them is either a director or assistant director. Um, with a very impressive resume, so of the thirty candidates, there were a lot of good people in there. Uh, but many with zero, um, rep director experience. I have a new building, the Crandall's building coming up, the design phase and, and such is gonna start shortly. You're gonna jump into budget season, uh, great, especially the capital side coming up, well, we prefer somebody obviously with director experience coming in. Coming in as camp has already started before them and so many other things, a lot of catch up, so we hopped in to only interview those that had. Assistant director, uh, experience, our five candidates, everyone, uh, Mike Wilkinson and, uh, Sarah Beth sat in on the interviews. Bring one of them, uh, and make them work, so we're, you're in a, in a great position, we should be able to achieve, um, some savings based off of, uh, Bruce's. Uh, salary, so we are in a, in a good place, uh, while we're in that neighborhood, our assistant clerk is retiring. Uh, she's been here a long time and thank her for her service, that posting has gone out, uh, we are seeing applicants, uh, come, come in for that as well. Uh, and I anticipate a positive outcome, uh, in that. I wanna thank the fire department today, Chief Laitel, we're sending his, uh, staff out on the trails, uh, with the quad and, and the off-road vehicle. Uh, just to make sure in, in the heat, that everyone had water, um, and it's good for them to get those, uh, things out on the trails every once in a while anyways. Uh, and exercise them and get familiar with the area in case there is something, uh, going on, we had a discussion internally today about ordinance sixty. Uh, down the road, we look to make some improvements to get us to the, uh, expand essentially, uh, how much. We're saving our senior citizens, uh, closer to the three hundred thousand that, that were a lot to do. Uh, the senior center had a summer cookout, uh, last week, it was amazing, I wanna say, uh, thank you to Bev and her staff. Uh, there, I, when I got there, there was no parking spots, it was full. Uh, and the fire department handled, uh, and the staff, the senior center did, the fire department did all the, giving the food out, they, they, they handed the food out to everyone. And assisted getting everyone and the, and the, the staff there served, uh, it was just such a positive event for our seniors, uh, and, and I'm so glad to have the. Uh, there was kind of a separation with the fire department, the senior center based on, uh, pre- previous staff, uh, that is gone. And I'm glad to have them back and we look for more, uh, collaboration, uh, in the future, uh, Bev, I'm sure you would agree. Uh, the pickleball court at the senior center is almost done, uh, it's, it's coming along great, I believe it just needs the nets, maybe some lining. Uh, while we're in that neighborhood here in Cove, the pickleball court is very successful, um, and being used often. However, we did have some complaints of skateboarding, uh, and possible bike riding and jumping on the nets and, uh, such, we had some signs, uh, developed. Uh, within the last week, you know, not, not a lot of, of money, uh, for our courts to say, uh, no skateboarding, no biking, that sort of thing. Um, and keep in mind, as I mentioned earlier, we have two new basketball courts coming as well, those won't be, um, concrete, those will be paved, so we saw some savings. We had originally planned to do one court with the money that we had, uh, in concrete, but those, those ports have been paved forever. I switched to concrete, we can do two ports, uh, so that's, that's the direction we're gonna move. We'll, we'll look at different, you know, as we know, ADA approaches and such to those courts, uh, when we do them, I thank Megan for her work and being starting to move. Uh, that forward. I'm not like the last time, but we got five more kayaks for our kayaks program, I thank you to the Hartford Foundation, uh, and the Talon folks for putting that together for us. And I'll try to put, put that out, um, over the weekend, I saw, uh, a car drive by with two of our kayaks on top, and so, uh, that's fantastic. Uh, the high school, uh, the, the, the Children's Theater, uh, this year is gonna be High School Musical. It's in five weeks, that's on the twenty fifth to twenty sixth at seven P M, our ta- our tickets will be available online. Uh, this year, which is, is new, it's a hundred and fifty kids, on top of all the kids that we have at camp right now in Crandall's, we also have a hundred and fifty kids on the other side. Uh, at the, at working with our staff and for the high school musical and our volunteers, so very, very, very thankful, and if you don't get a chance. You know, hop into the high school and look at rehearsals, it's just a hundred and fifty kids having a darn blast up there, so, uh, it, it's great. I wanna thank you, Lita, for her work on our new payroll system, um, we, our previous payroll system was developed somewhere around nineteen ten. Uh, and, and looking to, uh, improve it. Uh, we go to a new system, it'll be much, much, much more efficient for, uh, all of our staff, we're also switching over to office. Uh, three sixty five and, and, you know, Lita's just pushing at a, a hundred miles an hour, I thank her for it, many, many other improvements in regards to billing and everything else. Um, that are gonna come with all of that, so, uh, I had asked her to do that when her, within her first couple of years, she's done within the first couple of months. Uh, so, uh, it, it, we're very happy with our, our new finance director, our public work garage is all good to this point in, on, under budget on time. Uh, our ACO has left, uh, Anthony has left our, left to become a federal firefighter. Uh, which is a good gig, I can't blame him, relieved to go for that benefits, federal benefits rest of his life, uh, it's a win. Good news is he's still working part-time here until we can fill the role, we also have another part-time or two, uh, that we have been using, paving is underway. Uh, throughout town, Slater Road got redone, um, that is not the way I would, we would like to, but we did it. Um, as best we could with, to achieve some savings as well, by far, uh, I have heard more about the paving and thanking the town. For paving Slater Road, uh, than any road since I've, uh, been here, so I'm, uh, very happy, uh, without that, uh, that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Right? Yes, uh, so Council, Sam first?
Um, did I see, so they're starting to build more for Santini?
Sorry, building, they're, they're building two buildings, I believe, the rec building and maybe a maintenance building.
Okay.
The first two, uh, we were out there last week, all the foundations are there, it's massive. Um, great things to come, but it's slow and based on interest rates and everything, uh, but, uh, they, they, Santini does just an incredible job. They, they hire their, their contractors, they're just the best, here's up there, uh, clean, no issues done, so it's, it's moving along great.
Yeah, it looks like it, and my follow-up question on behalf of the ladies down at Headliners, wanna know, what's the deal with Starbucks? Have we heard any news?
I want, no, no news, again, there, I, I don't anticipate any problems, I think we got lead frog by South Windsor. Um, to do this, uh, Starbucks there, uh, it's right next to Club Studio there.
Yeah, they're, they're all ready.
Yeah, that went fast, yep, so we're hoping soon, my guess is they're, they're mirroring it with, um, Santina to some degree. But there are hundreds of thousands of dollars into it, I don't anticipate any sort of, uh, at this point, it's into the town, not to forget about their engineering and everything else, so the permits and stuff. You know, it's been, it's been good, so, um, I anticipate that moving forward.
Thank you, uh, Council.
Um, so I know you mentioned the ordinance sixty, when I talk during budgets, so also called the Homestead Act. I know Jason Lawrence had mentioned it in an email, so there, said something that. Council, during, especially during budget season, might wanna look into, also helps.
We, what we're gonna do is, is I met today, uh, with the chair and vice chair and discuss the options in ordinance sixteen forward. We will form a committee, a little, uh, ad hoc committee with, uh, them, again, um, Jason and Yolita. Uh, and then at some point in September, I think we decided the committee will come forward and make some recommendations, yes, Jason had that act. Uh, out today and we looked at a, a lot of different things, uh, right now, we're not using our ordinance sixty to its fullest potential. Uh, so we wanna, uh, move in that direction, uh, to expand it, you know, move some thresholds and such to get it closer to the three hundred thousand that we have a lot.
Can I just jump in real quick?
Please do.
So, the homestead, I don't think it's the homestead, but the homestead ordinance, um. Is a little different.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, we didn't talk about that today, but I do know a little bit about it, cuz I did a little research during the budget season, um. From my understanding, that would do essentially would lower the amount your house would be assessed by. Uh, but if you try to apply that broadly, it probably wouldn't work very well, cuz now you're just assessing everybody's house. Much lowers, just have to raise the mill rate substantially upon, we're happy to have Jason, everybody, he's gonna know it. Yeah.
Cuz it says you must be sixty five years older, so I don't know if it means one, or, I have no idea, just something that in mind.
Yeah.
See, Jason sounds like he's already.
Well, that's, well, that's one twenty nine is the, basically, the law that allows us to have an ordinance sixty.
Yeah.
Within that act, there's, what did Jason say, six or so different number, um, caveats in there, then we'll explore all of them. Um, yeah, in an effort to get forward, uh, to that three hundred.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And then, I was just wondering, a few weeks ago, I had emailed both chairs and you on the safe, right up the Fitch Report, um, State Department, did you. Ever start applying for it?
I'll ask Megan for an update, get that to you.
Okay, I'm not gonna be on the council, I'm just, um, but I'm just.
But I'll get it to you anyways, and I'll, and I'm reporting to council.
And I know there's enough time for her to apply for it, but I just figure with all the Fitch information, we spent so much on it. And actually can get, get a lot of information just out of there before.
Yep.
Yep.
This might, yeah, I don't know if it opens again, then, then she couldn't, you weren't here at the last council. Meeting, and I had a question on the town manager report, let me just pull it up. Had in there the Department of Emergency Public Protection, so that's just all automobile accidents, that's not actual, any other. Crime in Talon, right, that's just.
Talking about the report that the state gives us, uh.
Never looked at the last page, yeah.
Alright, so they, they've tried to, based on my concerns of having a, you know, quarterly update on crime and such, this, this is where they're trying to. Uh, bring us to, um, it's not nearly what I want, and it's, it's all over the board, Colleen, there's, there's not a lot to gain.
Yeah, cuz it's all accidents, that's not actually.
Data, by how many burglaries did we have, stuff like, right, no, I know.
So, that's what my question.
And I, and we have a new contract with them that I'm gonna try to again, hold off on, provided it doesn't affect our, um, SRO. And get what we're talking about here, which we all agree we should have, and that other town's want as well.
Alright.
Um, that I try to, uh, get that moving forward.
That's really, it was just those things you covered the staff and everything, that's great that you didn't have to let go any staff, so.
Thank you, uh, Council, Brian?
Can we, can I still get a list of what you had to cut?
Yes.
Five, thanks, I know you went over it, but just.
Uh.
Yeah, this three hundred thousand, ordinance sixty, is that just a budget number, or is that built into the ordinance?
I think, I think we've cooked that into the ordinance, that's, that's not to exceed that, yeah.
So we can modify that ordinance.
To increase it?
Yeah, it's not a state statute that limits that.
It's, no, I doubt it is, no, it allows us to adjust, this, I believe the statute defines that we can adjust it, yeah. It's, there's, high level two lovers, you can adjust with that, there's what the qualifying income is for that. Um, and then there's also the cap as to how much.
Network.
Cost of the program can be, so right now, um, we're not meeting the cap. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can look at either raising the cap or also raising the qualifying income. Yeah, or, yeah, so, uh, the committee will come back with some recommendations, it should be a good discussion.
We have a pretty good cushion, and I think we could raise that cap.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just think three hundred caps.
And get a lot more people.
Low, right, we're gonna hit more people.
I think you're amazing that, raising the number we're talking about, you know, there's like, I don't wanna say a poverty level. And so, by raising that, we're gonna, every time we raise it, we're bringing more people in. Um, we've been very conservative, I think we can be a little bit more loose, uh, with it, but again, to get whole, much closer to, to the three hundred.
And judges, it, I think it's not, I mean, I think functionally it's three hundred, but I think the policy for the ordinance says like it's less than, or. Not to exceed half one percent of the budget or something like that, Jason, there's like some actual.
But it calculates to a bit more than three hundred thousand, yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions for Brian? Alright, um, that brings us to adoption of minutes, just have one set of minutes, the two and ten minutes to. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion, right, um, all those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, one abstention, any nays, alright, motions pass, uh, with all in favor except Counselor Shay, who abstained. Correspondence to council, do we have any correspondence, Councilor check?
I just got one today, uh, thank you, and just open.
Thank you. Thank you, guess maybe we have, uh, this magazine, paper correspondence. Says mail to the town council, so, yeah. Um. Book report. Um, okay, chair persons report, um, I'll just take brief time to get, thank Councilor Chuck for all her service, um. Three plus years on the council and then, how many years on the board event?
Five.
Five years, so, over eight years of, of service, so, um, it's fortunate to serve with you on the council and the before on the mental health task force, so. Definitely had a great impact on it, uh, I hope, you know, whoever replaces you, uh, has a same spirit. Uh, so, definitely wanna thank you and, um, other comments, I guess, um. About the Independence Day celebration coming up soon, um, so, wish everybody a happy Independence Day and some travels to everybody traveling. Uh, during this busy vacation time here. With that, um, we'll go to communications from council persons.
Yep, I will just, uh, reiterate what Jacob said, and thank you, Colleen, for, you know, your years of service to the town. Um, you know, for all volunteers, and so, you know, thank you for devoting so much of your time to bettering the town.
I'll second that motion.
Be sure those sentiments, there's nobody that puts more.
Appreciate.
Thank you.
Uh, um, we'll go to our second public participation, this one is three minutes. I'll go to. Anybody in the room? Oh, good, we turned up, we sent someone upstairs to. We sent down a search party. The free plan for George.
Right in the, the, the room.
Go to the library.
Yeah, and George.
Take a look, he's got a drawer.
Alright, I guess I'll go online, I think we have one person. Alright, not seeing any this patient, so, looks like we'll close out that tonight, um, and certainly objection to adjournment, eight thirty two. Bad objection, we are adjourned, eight.